Good morning. Welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting for July 22, 2025. Call the meeting to order and note for the record, we do have a full quorum of commissioners present. Just silence your cell phone, avoid embarrassment, and if you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Our consent agenda has routine bills to be paid, reports, et cetera. All information is available in the auditor's office for the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Commission, any item that you would like removed or discussed on the consent agenda? All right. Look for a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to regular business. First item is a consider a motion to adopt a resolution to establish legal load limits on 16 structures. Jacob, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Morris, Highway Superintendent. Before you today, we have a resolution to update our posted structures within the county. Every year, we inspect half of our bridges. We hire a consultant to do that, and the DOT assists in the inspection of those bridges. This year, Chris with Civil Design Inc. identified one structure that needs to have a posting lowered. It's a structure that was already posted, and we are just reducing the weight limit on that bridge. In addition, there are several other structures which we are removing from the postings that have been replaced within the last year.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, turn it over to you for action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Kerski?
Motion carries. Aye, thank you. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution amending Minnehaha County's 2025-2029 Bridge Improvement Plan. Again, Jacob, this is how we keep bridges off of our structure list.
It is, yes. The Bridge Improvement Grant is a great tool that the South Dakota DOT provides for counties throughout the state to help fix bridges. Every year, we submit a five-year plan, which shows what we're going to spend on operating costs, bridge replacements, road reconstructions, and we have both construction and design. This structure, going through our five-year plan, this year, we identified needing to replace the structure before we start working on County Highway 103 south of Valley Springs. So we would like to include it in the PE grant, which is due in August. So in order to do that, we have to revise last year's five-year plan and include it, and that's what this resolution would accomplish.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, turn it over to you for questions, comments, action.
Move approval?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of big PE funds and cost participate 20% for three bridges. Jacob?
These are three bridges that are now included in our five-year plan for the DOT big projects, and we would like to apply to get them designed. The PE grant is due in August. That allows the consultant to go out and do what's called a TSNA, a type, size, and location, or a 30% design roughly, so we can figure out what type of structure, what size of structure, what the orientation's going to be, and then just start initial conversations with either adjacent agencies or landowners. The bridges that we're applying for here, we're planning to replace within the next five years, so we would like to start on the design.
All right. Public comment on this agenda. Commission, turn it to you.
Mr. Chair, just one question for Jacob. I think in your memo, you've got big preservation scores. Are those projected scores, or are those scores from a prior year? Where are those coming from?
Yeah, so the scores are a formula that's set out in the big handbook. These do not include the two additional points for increasing the wheel tax. The wheel tax is going to go into effect after the first of the year, and those points are only available after that time.
Okay. And then, I don't know, maybe I'm getting my types of projects mixed up, but do we foresee that these are going to be competitive scores?
Generally, they award most PE grants.
Okay.
The dollars available through the DOT vary a lot from year to year based on how many projects are under construction, or how many funds have been obligated that haven't started construction yet. But yes, I do believe that these projects will be competitive.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Jacob, so we're doing the engineering design. When would construction actually begin?
I believe 329160, I want to say, is slated for 2029. 330183, that's a structure in Valley Springs. I think we'll be, it all depends on when we become competitive with the big grant itself. So some of these structures, we might have to wait until they get posted before we score well enough for a replacement grant. Chris hasn't notified me that that structure is going to be posted within the next five years, so I don't know that we'll be competitive within five years. And then 33206, I think we have that scheduled for 2029 or 2030 at this point.
So several years out, and the posting, the load limit posting really impacts the priority?
The load, I mean, yeah, the load limit, reducing loads on the bridges really adds points to the score, which makes us competitive.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. We now have a briefing of the second quarter 2025 American Rescue Plan expenditures. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. It is our second quarter of 2025 quarterly report was due to the U.S. Treasury by the end of July, so we wanted to recap the report, as well as give you an update on what is left to be spent, as we have done in previous quarters. So for second quarter, we spent just over $271,000 on the remaining projects. The two projects that had dollars expended were the Sheriff's Tower, Emergency Tower project, and then, as well as the construction of additional courtroom in the courthouse. We have spent to date just under $36.8 million of our ARPA funds. The total award was just over $37.5 billion. That leaves just over $715,000 left to be spent. We actually have until the end of '26 to spend those funds. We anticipate actually that these three projects that are listed open, that there are these, the unshaded ones here are the ones that are still open projects. We anticipate actually all of those to be completed in third quarter, and hopefully the dollars will be expended in third quarter as well. So it is very possible that next quarter, we'll show this as zero dollars to be spent.
All right. Everything's tracking the way we planned it?
Correct. Yeah, everything's proceeding as we expected. No concerns from our office's perspective, but so after we do spend the rest of the dollars, the $715,000, eventually we'll have to go up through a closeout process with the U.S. Treasury. That has not yet been clarified from the U.S. Treasury what that process is, but we will be just waiting for that guidance from the feds once it's available.
Excellent. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, good morning, Susan. I see that we've appropriated and/or spent close to $37 million. My understanding is the county received $50 million. Just have some questions about where the remaining funds are being allocated, and if there's plans to spend those.
Yeah, we received actually $37,514,015. So we did not receive $50 million, it was 37 and a half. So those dollars, the unspent dollars are segregated in the ARPA fund, so that's where those cash balances are, and so they're not commingled in other funds. It's within a segregated fund, just specific for this project.
Well, thanks for the clarification. That must have been misheard at some point in the past.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Moving on, authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider adoption of provisional budget for fiscal year 2026.
Yes, Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. We are here to ask for your authorization for the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider adoption of our provisional budget for fiscal year 2026. The hearing will be scheduled for September 2, which is the first Tuesday in September. We've had a number of conversations regarding the budget. The budget that's before you, that will be published, is just over $132 million, $132.7 million, which includes $96 million in general funds, just under $16.8 million in highway funds, and just under $8 million in bond redemption funds. So just to remind you that public safety and justice continue to be a significant portion of our general fund budget at just over $68.4 million, which is 71% of our general fund. Additionally, we are not, have not included in this budget any new opt-out dollars that are being levied, so the opt-out dollars will remain the same as what was previously levied last year. As we get into the attachments to this, we shared this last week as well. The only things that's changed on this from last week are these two shaded, these two yellow lines here. Those are the two changes that you had requested and approved that we make. That was the addition to the public advocate office to have that position conversion, as well as an increase in $10,000 for blood and chemical analysis from the sheriff's department. So all other funds and dollars and lines remain the same. So this document here, and there is a lot of numbers on here, so I will not go through it line by line. This is the provisional budget that will actually be published on our website. It will also be published in the paper. And then we will also, within that provisional budget that will be posted, will include the notice of hearing, and additionally, a second week, we will publish the notice of hearing a second time. So I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions.
We'll take public comment on the notice of hearing for the adoption of the provisional budget. Anybody want to visit with the commission? All right. Commissioners, I'll turn it over to you for questions and action.
I'll make the motion to authorize the auditor publish the notice of hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, and that hearing date would be September 2.
September 2, yes.
All righty. Call the roll.
Kiple?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. First reading and consider a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 5, 2025, for an ordinance defining residency requirements for appointment to the Minnehaha County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Morning, Meredith.
Morning, Commissioners. Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office. Before you today is a, it's the first reading of an ordinance that would consider changing the allowed county of residents for our Housing and Redevelopment Commission. So in February of 2010, Minnehaha County adopted MC 1017 that established our Housing and Redevelopment Commission pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1177. And so this commission is comprised of five commissioners that oversees Safe Home, which is our Housing First program that provides long-term chronically homeless individuals with severe alcohol dependence, permanent housing opportunities, intense case management, and supportive services. So this commission is comprised of one Minnehaha County Commissioner, as well as four community members, and often those community members have experience in housing, financial services, and other related issues, or related industries, excuse me. So as I said, this is the first reading of the ordinance. If approved, it would allow for at most two commissioners on the HRC to be non-residents of Minnehaha County, given that they reside in a directly adjacent county to Minnehaha. So the unique nature of Minnehaha County and its workforce provides the potential for HRC, for potential HRC commissioners who may be specifically qualified to serve on this commission and have strong ties to Minnehaha County, but just may not necessarily reside within the county. So I am, I will stand by for any questions you may have. Again, this is just the first reading, and it would be considering a motion to set the second reading for our next meeting, which is Tuesday, August 5.
Thank you, Meredith. Public comment on this notice to set a hearing date. Commission, turn it to you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a question. Can you tell us how the other four members are chosen? Are they appointed? Who appoints them?
Yep. So whenever we have a term expiring, they, the terms are five-year terms, your term limited to two years, or your term limited to two terms, and when there is a term opening, we solicit on our website, we'll post that there's a current opening and invite folks to apply for the position, and then we take all of those applications and bring them to the commission to be considered. I will say, in my past experience, the last time that we appointed someone, we did only receive one application. So sometimes this is a commission that often has a little bit lower participation in applying.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Look for a motion to set the date of hearing.
Commissioner, is it? Yeah, just one quick question. I understand that there's a number of current committee members, or board members, rather, that, whose terms are expiring. Maybe you could fill us in on when those will be expiring, just for the, go to the public, if anyone's interested in applying for a position like that.
Yeah, definitely. So we do have two commissioners that are term limited. One of the commissioner terms will be ending in November of this year, so we will start, we'll post that on the website ahead of time, usually a month or two in advance, and do some outreach there. So November of 2025, and then the next one is May of 2026. So.
I just want to make a general comment that I'm inclined to keep things the way they are. Generally think that if you're making decisions that'll impact Minnehaha County, that you should live in the county. However, I also think leaving the discretion to the board to make those decisions. I imagine there are a lot of cases where people have an interest in the county and may, for whatever reason, live outside the county in an adjacent one, and be fully qualified, you know, to make decisions overseeing Safe Home. So I am open to the idea of exploring this, and I'll actually just go ahead and make the motion to hear the second reading.
So we have a motion and a second to set the second reading for Tuesday, August 5, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Opportunity for public comment. Any non-agenda item that someone from the public would like to address the commission on? You have five minutes. We allow for a total of 30 minutes. Anybody want to address the commission on
Good morning, Commissioners Chair. My name is John Coonery from District 11, Minnehaha County. And I had it on my heart this morning to come here. I wasn't really planning on it, but last week I was out with many other people trying to get signatures having to do with the school board, Sioux Falls School Board, who had passed opt-out of several million dollars ongoing, on top of other opt-outs previous years, which is putting a tremendous burden on the taxpayers of this county, along with our city that's doing the same thing, along with our county that just voted for that last week. So I couldn't be here last week because I was out trying to get signatures in a very short time, 20 days, which is really unrealistic. However, I also want to, I'm not speaking in place of them, but I have on my heart this morning some of those people that I talked to in this last week, and also a year ago in May. And so when I was knocking on thousands of doors, ringing doorbells, talking with hundreds of people, including a man and his wife on West 51st Street, who told me then that they were thinking that they were going to have to sell their house. They thought that they had enough money to retire, their house was paid for, but now they're not sure that they may have to sell their house and move to some other place where they can afford it, because their taxes continue to go up year after year. And likewise, the lady I talked to again on West 53rd Street, one block away from me, who said in five years, her property, their property taxes since they moved here have doubled. And a gentleman who just moved here from California, who said his property taxes in California were less than what they are here. And the woman I talked to last May, up in the northwest, one of the mobile home parks up there, at the end of the day, this really got to me. I knocked on her door, and she's, and she didn't answer, so I went around, and here was this little black dog came around, and I looked around, and here she was, and I started talking to her, and I told her why I was there, to find out what was important to her. And she looked around, and not all the places there necessarily looked that well up kept, but she tried to keep her place well kept up. And her little dog, his name was Sam, and I can take you there if you don't believe me, and he had one eye, but she, she had mercy on the little dog. She tried to keep up her property and still pay her taxes. She probably isn't here today because she's a certified medical assistant out there working, so that she can pay her taxes, so she doesn't lose her home. So I want you to stop and think, the next time that you have an opportunity to say, "I'm not saying anything that was said today," but everything you weigh, keep in mind those many tens of thousands of people across this county and beyond who are impacted by every decision you make, and see if there aren't things you can do differently, possibly, to make those people's lives a little bit easier. And so I thank you for your time, Mr. Chair, Committee, Commission Members. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Make sure if you do talk today that we have you sign in, because we are required to have your name for public record. Anybody else like to address the commission?
Manny Steele, just wanted to comment on the same thing John was talking about, except I was out knocking on doors too, and there's a lot of frustrated people out there on their taxes, and we only have 20 days to get over 6,000 signatures. That isn't even logical. There ought to be, I'm not sure who controls that, but 20 days is not even reasonable, and that needs to be adjusted according to common sense, which I don't think it's been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, the county does not set those days. That's set statutorily by the state legislature. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the commission. My name is Dan Golar. I'm a resident of Sioux Falls, and I wanted to discuss next month's Sioux Empire United Way campaign that will be conducted on, in the county offices. And so I have three questions for you to consider, and then I have a packet of information that provides more detailed information about some of the various ways that the money is raised and allocated through that organization. But the three fundamental questions I'd like you to consider are, one, why is a nonprofit's fundraiser being conducted on government, in government buildings on public employees' time and utilizing government resources? Second, why is the Sioux Empire United Way the only nonprofit granted the privilege of conducting its fundraising campaign within the county offices and utilizing county resources? And then, third, why is the county aligning itself with the Sioux Empire United Way, who has a politically ideological and partisan agenda? I realize the third one is a difficult pill to swallow, because we'd all like to believe that this is a nonpartisan, unpolitical organization, but most of the evidence that I'm providing in the attached documents will show you otherwise. I have personal involvement with the United Way, and I believe that in the mission of trying to do good here in the community, the issue I have was the manner in which the money is allocated to the organizations that are funded through the United Way. A few years ago, they started an initiative that is motivated by, excuse me, what they say on their website is equity and a commitment to a program of diversity, equity, inclusion. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. This is a politically charged topic. Unfortunately, we've seen a big switch and change in the way the political winds are blowing over the recent, last year as political affiliations changed, and so I raise concerns about this particular emphasis in the work that they were doing, and it seemed to be partisan and politically motivated. They denied that, but if you look through the materials and see, it's hard to, I think, dismiss the notion that there is a clear partisan agenda to this. And I think that as a county, there's no reason to align ourselves with organizations who might have, or even the perception of, a clear political leaning with regards to partnering with those organizations. If you look through the second page here with the accomplishments, one of those was the United Way-sponsored training opportunities for funded organizations, staff and board of directors. These included DEI training sessions, where we were taught about radical gender ideology, critical race theory, et cetera. And if that's okay, if an organization wants to promote that agenda, I don't think it's one that is widely held or necessarily held by all the citizens within the county. And so it doesn't seem like that sort of favoritism should be shown towards a specific organization. The funded agencies were also required to fill out applications that included metrics that measure diversity that measure diversity, equity, inclusion progress within the funded application process. You'll see that includes on your DEI committee member, Susan Williams, member of the Transformation Project. That is a clearly partisan and politically motivated organization to mainstream radical gender ideology. Under the, this next page that has the graphic with the, the three people with the sort of cartoon versions of equality, equity and liberation explains that equity is achieved, is only achieved when we identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented the full participation of communities most impacted by systemic oppression. And you can believe in that philosophy, but I don't know that we have evidence. I was never presented with any evidence of widespread systemic oppression within the county or within the Sioux Falls government. It's also important to note, according to this, this is from the DEI guidebook that is used to implement this program within the Sioux Empire United Way. They say it's important to note that equity differs from equality. Equality refers to treating everyone the same regardless of differences. Equality does not necessarily lead to equitable outcomes because diverse communities have diverse needs and have faced varying obstacles and inequities. I'm not an attorney, but you have a state's attorney here. That sounds like discrimination to me to allocate resources based on people's immutable characteristics. Continuing on in the DEI handbook, there's a complete section about the sorts of data that needs to be collected and submitted in the application. That includes pronouns, preferred pronouns. You'll notice if you turn the page, it explains what that is because the Sioux Empire United Way has an ever-understanding, evolving understanding of gender. And so that includes on the childcare forms that children should be asked what their preferred pronouns are. That does not seem appropriate. You'll also see they gave $12,000, $12,445 to that Transformation Project. And then you see information on the last page about that organization's work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioner. Leah Anderson, Auditor's Office. So interestingly, I came forward about the same topic last year to the commission office. I spoke with Tom and my concern as a department head is that we truly are using county resources to promote United Way. And when I went to have that conversation, I asked if the county would be willing to fundraise for other organizations and have it run through payroll deduction. But I was told that that's kind of a commission decision. So my thought is this, since we're using county resources, I pulled some numbers. We, in the '24 campaign year, four deductions being made for '25 for payroll, because my department has to enter all of this, Angie has to enter these forms. We had of over, we have about 620 full-time employees and 103 participated. However, a lot of those deductions, the majority of those payroll deductions are very minimal where somebody's maybe contributing a one-time gift of a dollar, anywhere up to contribution over time of a thousand. Seventeen percent of our employees are participating in those contributions, which is not a very high number. And then of that, only 13 of our employees that are contributing, are contributing 55% of those contributions. So we don't have a lot of participation. However, it still takes time to process these forms and, and it's taking other employee time away. They have to attend meetings and, you know, there's just a big focus through the county on United Way and I don't think that that's right since the taxpayers pay our bills. And so I would just like to see us not promote any contributions. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right, move on to liaison reports. Commissioners, anybody want to start us off? Commissioner Benega?
As you well know, yesterday we spent some time at Metro Management, which is the group that manages the 9/11 system for the fire, the police and sheriff's office and the ambulance services. It's been encouraging to see the growth of that staffing. We have now a full, almost a full-time consensus, I guess, of management and filling all the positions that have been open for a while. They did a great job of training and consolidating some of that management time from a long period of time to getting it done in a very short, concise period of time. There's going to be, in the next weekly acknowledgement of information that we send out through the commission officers, a summary of the budget process and all that kind of information that I think you'll see more details about. But I'd say that both Commissioner Karski and I are proud of the fact that we're providing those services to Minnehaha County's residents and the success rate and I guess the reply times of making calls is amazing. So, and we also have a manager who's been asked to be part of the governor's task force on the continuation of conversations about consolidations and other things that are happening in Metro Management. So it's been very positive to be on that board for a few years now. Second thing I wanted to mention that I should have mentioned when we were talking about the whole issue of the bills being paid. Out of that four and a half million dollar disperse, dispersment that the county made last week, 3.4 million of that went back to the city, or to the state, I'm sorry, in motor vehicle dollars. So people who think in some cases that were regulated by our own actions, to be honest, 90% of what we do is required by the state. So it's, I think, important for people to understand that and those numbers this week also talk about how much money that we collect that we send back to the state of South Dakota, which I think people need to have that basic understanding.
Thank you, Commissioner Benega. I'm just going to add on with the Metro Communications. I think it's been about a year since we changed. Commissioner Benega is the chair of that group. Yesterday, I sat between the sheriff, the fire chief, the police chief. We had a city councilor member on that board, plus the Metro Communications leadership and some finance people. So very positive meeting. I was, you know, the change, I think, not only in the morale, but the culture within Metro Communications has been very noticeable and very positive. And I applaud them for what they're doing and how well they're doing it, so. Other liaison reports.
Mr. Chair, I just want to give an update from the Public Defender's Office. We had a, Commissioner Karski and I, a PDO meeting this morning with Tracy Smith and just wanted to report that we've got about six new employees moving into the office space at the 300 building downtown. They're going to be moving over their civil division, which includes abuse and neglect cases and juvenile attorneys. Of those six employees, two are the public service pathway placement individuals. So these are individuals that are presently in law school and will be working in the Public Defender's Office. Also did want to mention Commissioner, I don't think we mentioned it last meeting, so probably good to bring it up this time around. Commissioner Blyenberg and I attended NICO conference out in Philadelphia and I think it was a great time where to connect with a lot of individuals and bring home some interesting ideas that maybe long-term we could look at applying to the county government to improve efficiencies and innovate a little bit. For instance, looking at and exploring the idea of translation services using technology. I also had a number of discussions regarding the implementation of AI in different departments to increase efficiency and streamline operations more than they currently are. So very interested at looking at those further and seeing what we can get done to make the county more innovative and forward-thinking.
Yes, I agree, Commissioner. The interpreter's budget for the Public Defender is $37,000, of which they've spent roughly $25,000 already, so they're most likely going to run over on their budget. Difficult thing about that port, you have to hire an interpreter to be there and sometimes people don't show up, so you still got to pay the interpreter or if you have technology, you obviously don't have that expense that is going on. The other one is psych evaluations, which are required statutorily in certain cases. Their budget there was $97,000 for psych evaluations and they've already spent $91,000 and we're only halfway through the year. So probably going to require a budget supplement for a few of these things. Typically, the Public Defender's Office has budget savings from salaries, but they are fully staffed and most likely we're going to be talking later in the year here about how to keep their budget balanced and what it may take for supplements to get that done. So Commissioner Blyenberg?
Last week, the Safety and Justice Challenge Committee met with input and feedback from several of our community partners. Just wanted to highlight that some of the grant funding that we've received that we are using to support Think 3D has been spent to incorporate the Bridges Program in the jail. So this is not taxpayer dollars, but we're using it to get this started. They've been operating for, I think, four months and had 32 participants and based on some of their surveys, I think they're very effective in what they're doing and the work that they're trying to accomplish with some of our inmates before they're released. And along those lines, Think 3D has the Leaders of Tomorrow Justice Impacted Cohort for people in the community to attend starting in August. And just to note that they save a handful of positions for people who work with a justice impacted community. So if any of our employees, I know several have attended, I was able to attend. It's, it's a very well-run program. I would say you can't overestimate the impact that it will have. So just wanted to put that out there as an update from Think 3D.
All right. No additional liaison reports. Moving on to non-action commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll just throw one idea out there apropos of nothing. Our local United Way raises about $9 million a year, I think, in their annual campaign and then that goes out to various nonprofit charities, some entities that if they didn't exist, the government sector would need to step in. So I find it a little bit interesting to hear that we've got concerns with property taxes, but then in the, roughly the same breath, we're also saying some of our charitable giving that's basically the foundations of what makes Sioux Falls special is a lot of the charitable and business relationships that give back to the community. So I'm just going to put myself in the political camp of being pro United Way. I didn't know that that would be a controversial statement, but I think we've just got a group of folks, just to, just to lay some cards on the table, frankly, we've got groups that kind of went from sucking up all the oxygen with election conspiracies, then they suck up all the action with pipelines and then they suck up all the actions about penitentiary and then they want to turn around and talk about property taxes as if that's the cause de jour. And that's fine, but then get your messaging straight and then understand how property taxes work in the first place, understand the charitable giving that's a backbone to this community. So I just think we've got kind of some political leaders in this community that are just unserious people and are looking for a cause de jour. But if you want to make, if you want to make United Way the hill to die on, good luck with that. United Way is just a very positive force in our community. The groups that vet the applications of where the funds go are volunteers. This is just civic engagement going back to Dootokville. So this is what makes America special. So good luck with that effort and, but I'm happy to support our entity as Minnehaha County, giving that opportunity, that option for people to use payroll deductions and whatnot. So again, apropos of really nothing worth responding to, but I just don't want to denigrate the United Way. Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other non-action commission discussion?
Mr. Chair, just wanted to spend a little time replying to a couple of the individuals that gave some public testimony and just wanted to say that I sympathize with the petition process and the number of days that are opened to submit those petitions. A very, like, you know, like Commissioner Karski noted, that is a legislative issue and for the record, wanted to voice my support for extending the number of days available to citizens to put an opt-out open to a public vote. I know a lot of individuals put a significant amount of their personal time away from their families and their kids to gather those petitions. And unfortunately, as far as I understand, I don't think an opt-out has ever been put to a public vote in the city of Sioux Falls. And there's a clear, clear reasons why that's the case and I think the legislature should take a close look at that next legislative session. I also did want to reply to the comments made regarding United Ways and impact in the community and in the role of the county in fundraising. I take a slightly different perspective from my colleague. I frankly have some concerns about the use of DEI standards in the funding and grant applications, particularly the requests for pronouns and other gender and racial statistics that are used to determine where those donated dollars are placed in the community. I think that's a very wrong-headed approach and the country as a whole on a, on a national level, even on a state level here in South Dakota, I think we're solidly moving away from woke ideology and DEI practices and measures. And I believe the county should as well. Granted, a number of these funded nonprofits do a lot of incredible work in, you know, in the community and they do offset a lot of government spending that would need to take place if those individuals weren't served by those nonprofits. And I greatly encourage individuals of their own accord to select and donate to the charities of their cause. But I think it's a wrong approach to give preferential treatment. That's what mostly troubles me above all to one particular charitable organization and close the door to other organizations that are doing just as much good work in the, in the community. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one quick response on that as to the property tax elements. Friends on the school board, and they're, they're opt-out just to keep the lights on and just operating funds. This is not for any new project. I think you can debate the number of days to pass signatures, but let's recall, just again, I find some of these, this effort and this subculture a little bit unserious to the moment of what the challenges in our community are. 2% of people turned out for the school board election, you know? And then we're going to say, well, we only had 20 days to get 5% signatures to do a $2 million budgetary thing that's almost a rounding error in the school board's operations and budget. So I just think we have to take a step back and say, who are serious leaders on our school budgeting, our county budgeting, et cetera, and how our property taxes work? I just don't think that some of the people leading this, the movement there, judging maybe by their results of not getting results, are, are serious individuals with a plan of how to do things differently. And I think we need some leaders that can stand up to them and say, this really isn't a serious movement. If you've got an alternative- isn't a serious movement. If you've got an alternative plan, put forth an affirmative proposal, not just what a lot of what we've seen in this legislative task force on the property tax so far. We just, we just want to cut a lot. We have no idea what we're cutting. It's just Chesterton's fence all over the place, tearing down the fence before you know what the fence is even used for in the first place. So again, back to the 5% signatures, I just can't take that movement very seriously when they can't put forward a candidate for the school board, which would vote on the opt-out, and we get 2% turnout for that election. So just my parting thought. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right. Going to shut this down and look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries. We are adjourned.